And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Cleary.
Here.
Laney.
Here.
Harvey.
Hawk.
Here.
Juan. Harry.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Nate and Craig informed me, uh, earlier on the week that Nate has an eighth grade night to attend for one of his children and Craig has the, uh, uh, leading basketball tournament game to attend for one of his children. Uh, next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes. Uh, regular council meeting of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. Finance committee meeting of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. And the public utilities committee meeting of January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Have any edits, additions, omissions? I'm hearing none. Those minutes were standard approved. Uh, next up, we have audience participation.
I'm not ready yet.
Okay, anybody?
But had invited guests, um, ABM, but they weren't able to complete during the council meetings.
Okay, so ABM, you guys want to finish your presentation?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So I, I was really close to being making my time limit, but not quite there, so. Uh, really, the last thing I wanted to let you know is that, um, if you recall the last time I, uh, presented to the subcommittee, uh, uh, one of the directives was to investigate different financing options for the project. And I worked closely with, uh, with Mr. Elam, uh, who did a lot of his own due diligence in reaching out to some local banks to see what, uh, was out there and available. Huntington Public Finance Corporation came back with the most competitive rate. It was a, a tax-exempt municipal lease option, um, which is a little bit different than a bond in that it's not a general obligation borrowing. It does not actually count towards your, uh, bonded debt capacity. But it is essentially, it acts the same way, it's just collateralized by the value of the asset. Uh, it, it's a seven-year term, we did that because it matched pretty well with the return that we think you're going to get on that investment. So essentially, the enhanced revenues would go to offsetting the, the payments, uh, over the first seven years. And thereafter, it would be just enhanced revenue returning back to the city and, and the, the general fund. And they came in at a two-point-six-five percent, uh, fixed rate for, for the seven-year term. So I, I don't know, John, if you have any comments or thoughts on, on any of that?
Yes, as Tyler said, I did check with two other banks, this one was substantially less than another one. And one of them tried to, didn't really understand municipal tax-exempt leases, um, as they have been explained to me, so they kind of disqualified themselves, but this is, this is, uh, maybe fifty-six percent of what my other rate was.
We do a lot of work with Huntington, um, I don't know, you may know that, uh, rates are going up, the Fed is raising rates multiple times this year. Uh, Huntington was holding this one for me as a favor, um, which I think is part of why it was probably lower than the others. So, uh, hopefully, they can, they continue to hold that, but there is some volatility or potential for that to go up, unfortunately, pretty, pretty quickly, so just wanted to be transparent, that's not locked in until there's a, there's an approval, they can lock that in once there's an approval. Any other questions?
Uh, I know that we've had several businessmen come and speak to council about this. I was just wondering, in, in your initial data gathering, how many business folks you did speak with? And did you speak to any of the public that's going to be using the, this?
Yeah, so I, I was actually not part of the original walkthrough, I think Joe Sokol was working with you guys at the time and he, he exited from ABM, so. My understanding in talking to our project development team is they spoke to a number of the business owners down there, I think it was, there was an extensive conversation with, uh, one individual, I understand owns a furniture store, maybe downtown. Um, and so they gathered a, a lot of his input, I think he gave them a, a lot of time. Uh, I, I do not believe we spoke to any of the patrons, you know, in, in actually the parking spaces.
When you say we spoke to a number, would, would that be three or more than that, a dozen?
I don't think it was that many, I think it was probably three or four business owners down there. And I, I, I wasn't there, I do apologize, I wasn't there, so that's why I don't know.
Thank you. Any other questions? So, good on that?
Yeah, the, the last thing, I mean, hey, obviously, you know, hopefully, uh, we've put together a scope that, that you feel is a good, uh, solution to the parking challenge down there. Um, you know, i- if we got your approval, we'd lock that rate in immediately and, and get things ordered for you, the actual install would, would likely only take four months, so. Uh, su- supply chain and interest rates are really the only concerns right now, is getting, getting things ordered and getting like rates locked in, so. Uh, would love the opportunity to do it for you.
Wow.
Kind of carrying on what Mike was asking about, did you all talk to any, like, downtown shoppers or residents or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so the whole thing based on three or four business owners?
I mean, there's not too many patrons parking on the street, they're all employees.
Yeah.
It's, there's nowhere to park, so it's like, that, that's what we're getting to.
I, I, I think it was less based on talking to three or four patrons and, and more trying to talk to the, the mayor and trying to understand what the challenge was down there. Uh, and as we stood it, the challenge was people parking there for the day and taking up parking spaces that would otherwise be available for people that were trying to go into shops or, you know, things like that. So it was really built around trying to make sure that people weren't sitting in those parking spots for longer than you wanted them to be there.
Good.
Um, so the four-month projection that you've got, is that based on, um, current issues with supply chain? So I mean, there could be some latitude one way or the other, depending on how things progress in that whole realm, is that correct?
Could be, could be, yeah, uh, uh, as it exists right now, um, if you were to approve it, that, that was what my team told me, it was probably four months. Supply chain's in, in some pretty crazy flux right now, as I'm sure everybody knows, but, uh, a- as it exists right now today.
Okay, so the, um, the equipment, uh, the software, um, is it a single vendor or do you have a backup in case something goes haywire that there's still chip issues or whatever it is, so that this wouldn't drag out beyond eight months?
Uh, i- in case, so, so it's one vendor, um, we've been staying in good contact with them, uh, trying to, you know, anticipate, they call me, uh, weekly, just trying to get a general sense for, hey, should we still have things on, on hold here, should we be preparing for this? And so far, I've been saying, yeah, you know, keep, keep them in the, in the queue, I don't have any final decisions yet, but let's, let's monitor it, yep, but, uh, they're, they're ready, uh, as of right now.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Appreciate it.
Very much appreciated.
Yep.
Tom, information?
Thank you all.
Mayor?
I just kind of start, kind of going off of this as well, I don't know where everybody stands on this, I know it's not popular, um, thinking about voters and things like that, but if we're going to be serious about, you know, growing our downtown business-wise, we need to do something about the solution. I think this is the most feasible solution we have. It's a growing problem, it gets worse every day, trying to find parking. The businesses are getting killed by it, you know, and we have business owners that have expanded and expanded and nowhere for their people to park. We've tried, you know, making everybody's employees move, park somewhere else, it hasn't worked. The only way to correct the behavior is through enforcement. I mean, you all realize, like, no one speeds driving through Hanging Rock, wonder why? Because they know they're going to get a ticket for it, so if we have to correct the behavior if we're going to grow downtown and have more people coming in and out. I'll leave it at that, if you guys have any more questions or concerns on that part of it. Only other updates I have is that, uh, there will be a, the third street here will be blocked off this weekend, on Sunday, for, um, celebration for Cincinnati-LA game. Um, we also had our Bath and Lane kickoff project meeting this morning, um, that's looking well, we're still working on the CDBG project, which we talked about during the budget meeting. I think that's it. I had one other thing, but I can't remember.
Any question? Good, thank you, Mayor, Tom, do you have?
I, I do, if I may, address the city solicitor. In looking at this, there is a resolution and there is also an ordinance for ABM. Now, resolution would, could pass and go into effect with the number of people that are here today within thirty days.
No, because the resolution also spends money, so it violates the charter, because it has to have either favorable or disfavorable recommendation of finance to be in order.
Thank you.
You can read it, you just can't act, it can, it can take the first reading, but you can't act on it unless it proceeds either favorable or disfavorable according to the charter.
Some kind of resolution?
Yeah, because the, the resolution would spend more or less, right?
Right.
Any spend, any expenditure of money on the charter requires finance committee to give it either favorable or disfavorable, because of what, what happened, can't give you one.
Yeah, so will it die due to a lack of?
It doesn't die, you just read it, it gets first reading, next maybe it gets second reading.
From a resolution?
Uh, also a resolution, yeah, you'll have to put it back on.
Okay. Any other questions? Good, all right, any other audience participation? All right, on to communications, um, I do have to Mr. Perry forward an email to council. From Mr. Robert Pleasant. Yeah, I know it's in council email, um, Marta, you've also got a copy, um, dealing with, uh, question is for plans of lots and, and, um, some of the properties located on the one thousand block of Eighth Street, Chestnut Streets. This, I will include this in these minutes, I also, uh, wanted to include in the minutes that I received a, a letter, uh, addressed to council from Mark and Nancy Howard. It's a letter about the Lawrence County Commissioners deciding on their own where they want to put a new jail. Uh, this is in regards to the, the, the Lombard Grade School property being a possible location for the jail. I will, I will get this and email this, there's only one copy, so I will, we'll scan this and email it to all council members.
I think we've got it, we've got it.
You did get it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, look over this, I plan on reaching out to both of these people, um, if anybody else would like to. If you need their phone number, I've got their phone number and address right here. Well, Mayor, do you know, I mean, I, I read in the paper where they said this one, looking for, probably up there on
the old Lombard School, open-door schools, I mean, uh, were they kind of tearing that down? I thought this was going free for a bit and actually you said part of it.
Yeah, they were planning to tear it down because I know that was one of the projects submitted for the, uh, State of Ohio Department of Melons demolition, Brownsville, Illinois.
Thank you. Is there, does anybody, uh, because I would like to ask this question, is there, has anybody heard of any other possible locations for that? Because I, personally, I'm not in favor of that either. The Lombard property being the county jail, I haven't heard, I haven't heard either. Maybe the Horse Park is not being used, it's in the South Irons and industrial park.
Yeah.
That may be a good location for it, they missed that in the letter here. I was just throwing that out there. All right.
I've got a question.
Chris?
Getting back to, uh, the letter from Mr. Pleasant.
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Anderson, if you don't mind, can you tell me the, um, the ordinance that we put together for, um, uh, on December twenty-third? More, putting the moratorium, putting, uh, an end. Do you know, or can someone tell me, if somebody broke ground prior to that ordinance, or they then grandfathered, is that? And, and this is the reason why, the assumption in that neighborhood was that this was more of the, uh, CAO, low-income apartments that were being built.
I don't see what, but.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
My apologies, I thought I, I thought I included you. And, um, it was, uh, a resident in that, uh, Eighth Street and Chestnut Street area that's kept in contact, contact with the construction people. They noticed the footer was bigger than any of the other apartments that were going in. One of the construction guys kind of tipped his hand and said, oh, no, this is, uh, this is going to be a group living facility, it's not low-income homes that are being built there, Long Depot. That's what raised the red flag, so my question again, and, and if I can recall correctly, it seems that, uh, there was probably some ground broken prior to our December twenty-third moratorium. Does that then give them the ability to move forward on that?
It depends on a lot of factors, so, uh, I, I don't know, breaking ground, it's grandfathered, he passed the moratorium.
Okay.
I, I don't think that alone, but there are certain things, steps they could have taken to met, so, you know, I, I don't, to answer it, I have no idea what this place is going to be or what, you know, who owns any of those items, so I, to give you a definite answer, I can't do. But I can tell you breaking ground was a grandfather.
And that was my question, if anybody in the room knows?
I, I got it like an hour or so ago, and I just looked at the parcels real quick, they were all owned by CAO, and I, my, what I'm anticipating is that's phase three, which is, it's not transitional housing or rehabilitation, um, but LMI or, um, type housing, so like forty percent income, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, from what I've read from all the other phases that need the square order as well. So it would be income-restricted housing, I believe.
Okay, but not, not necessarily, uh, group living?
Yeah, I, I know that they were putting in some single-family homes, um, in which that could be that, I don't, you never know. I don't know what the person talking, you know, if they do, or why, I, but from all the other projects they're doing, they're all based off of the income-restricted housing. Anywhere from forty to eighty percent income restriction.
Thank you.
Everybody good on communications? All right, a hundred reports, there are none. Uh, moving along to ordinance, uh, Marta, would you please give ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-two oh-seven, first reading?
To adopt the permanent operating budget flexibility of Ionton State of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency first reading.
Wow.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, make a comment that we did give that favorable recommendation that passed, and I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rule and, and give ordinance twenty-two, second, seven, second, third reading, title only.
Do we need to do that since we're not six? Can we suspend rules five?
Next, Dick? I would throw that.
Any? Can you extract that from, uh? Yes, please, okay. Uh, any discussion? John?
I appreciate that, Mr. Cleary.
I try.
I truly appreciate it, thank you, thank you for the effort.
There, is there a timeframe we're on now to get this thing passed?
It has to be, uh, passed by the end of March. And what, what my selfish reason was, if it would have been able to pass tonight, then that would have given us eighteen days to enter twenty-five-hundred lines into a software system and verify that we had the right numbers and all that. Whereas if it passes on the next reading, and hopefully it will, it will, we will be going as quickly as we possibly can, because if it's implemented, goes into effect immediately, that would mean that we would have that budget in place for your February financial statements.
Thank you.
Would it make your job easier if we called a special meeting to vote, I mean, is that something that we could do?
Sure.
Is anyone?
Call to consider people. Tom, if, if we're on, get six of that here.
John?
We'll get it done, after the sec, after the second meeting, hopefully, if there's six people here, we will get it done. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm kind of in agreement with you, though, just, I mean, whether or anything else that may pop up, I mean, if we could just set a date, if we could set a hard date to say, can we, the five of us, we can, I'm sure, get one of these guys?
I will say, I, I probably got five basketball games next week. I don't know, I know, because this, I, I was talking to both Nate and Craig, and this is the end of our crazy, crazy time. So I know this week, one in the next week, I can't say for sure, but we would still have six. So, I don't know, I mean, after, probably next week, but then by then.
We'd be back to regular.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I just can't say for certain.
Are we limited to, limited to workday weekdays, I mean, can we call a special meeting on any day of the week as long as?
Yeah, or, or if it doesn't get six people here next time, you could call a special meeting immediately after that.
Yeah.
You could have the third reading and then you just need five.
I think that would be preferred for, for your all schedule. Like I say, we will have it, if it passes on the twenty-fourth, it'll be shown in your February financials, so I appreciate the concern. We got it.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, your staff?
We could, we, in the past, we have called a special meeting after the regular meeting, just in case it doesn't, it needs an extra meeting to make something pass, I mean, it's urgent.
After the next meeting?
Yes, you have your regular schedule, your regular agenda, and then there'll be another agenda that will say, immediately following this particular meeting, that there will be another meeting, uh, yeah.
Okay.
So we set the next agenda.
Second and third, so we'll give a second and third reading the same night due to the special meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you, if that has to, if that has to happen, would, would, we will do that?
Six votes, then we don't do anything with the second meeting.
Okay.
The bad way.
I'll make note of that, too, so. Go ahead, do you guys want to go ahead and say we're going to have a special meeting immediately following? And we can always cancel, right, if we, if, uh, what the meeting was called for, the purpose of the meeting, we'll take care of the purpose.
Yeah, we'll always cancel that, okay. Do we need to make a motion for that, or is it just a scheduling?
That's the problem.
I'd like to make a motion to schedule a second, um, and, and a meeting immediately following our next council meeting.
So we've got a motion to have a special meeting on February twenty-fourth, immediately following, regular schedule of council meeting.
Close second.
Five, second. Roll call please, Marta.
Cleary.
Aye.
Laney.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Okay, so we will have that special meeting, um, scheduled just in case. And the purpose for the meeting is to give ordinance twenty-one oh-seven, third reading.
Twenty-two.
Or twenty, I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm starting last year. Twenty-two oh-seven, okay. Everybody good on that? Okay, Marta, would you please give ordinance twenty-two oh-eight, first reading?
An ordinance demanding ordinance twenty-two zero-one and declaring an emergency first reading.
Is the bed full of food trucks?
That's what, yeah, I looked, briefly looked over that, and that was just language, correct?
It's simply including the, uh, Ohio Fire Code.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if we suspend the rule, can we pass, if they're canceled?
We can suspend rules anyway, then, okay.
Good try.
You could add it to the, to the special.
Special meeting?
Second meeting, for the next regular reading.
Make that motion.
Yeah.
How long would you be in your motion, right, it's just in the jet of Iowa?
So, purpose is for also twenty-two oh-eight, to be a third reading. Okay, any other discussion on twenty-two oh-eight? Check it.
Um, I talked to Jeff Joseph, and he made me aware of this, and I talked to Matt about it, and I, I didn't know that it had gone anywhere, so I'm glad that you pointed that out, so.
Okay, thank, thank you for looking into that. Uh, on to ordinance number twenty-two ten, would you please give that first reading, Marta?
An ordinance authorizing proposal, J S two-one-zero-three-zero-one, amendment one to the ABM facility support services bundled energy solutions project, agreement number eight-seven-three-zero-three-eight-nine-five, through federal acquisition regulation number five-five-two, point two-eight-three-dash-one-one-four, use of federal supply schedule contracts by non-federal entities, May two thousand nineteen, and declaring an emergency first reading.
Any discussion on that? John?
I hate to be a broken record, but this may be something that you want to include on a possible third meeting also. And the reason that I'm saying that, and I don't even know if this will work, but what was critical this evening through talking with Tyler, is the Huntington Bank had that one rate locked in. I don't know if, if he can sweet-talk anyone to say, hey, you know, this is what happened, it had first reading. It may be a moot point, but that is an option if council wants to do that.
Okay. I, I'll reach out to Craig and Nate also, see if there's anything they'd like to include in the special meeting, the possible special meeting. Everybody good on that? Uh, any other discussions? All right, on to resolutions, that, uh, resolution twenty-two oh-nine failed due to lack of favorable or unfavorable recommendations from finance. So we.
It just can't, it didn't fail, it just can't be acted on.
Okay.
So, you can read it if you want, or you can just place it on a new, new agenda.
Okay.
I would say, place it on a new agenda.
With a new now third reading?
Uh, yes. The ordinance can stay right where it's at.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? On Ms. Lanis, anybody?
I remember the thing, I forgot.
Mayor?
Um, it's just, Dr. Dinkus is not going to be able to make it to the second meeting this month, but he'll be at the first meeting of March.
First meeting of March.
To get the quarterly update.
Quarterly update. The quarterly update. Okay, thank you for that. Any other Ms. Lanis?
Chairman Haney, you had asked me to look into some pricing for putting astroturf on the infields of Lululeta. And I contacted the company, and they sent me a general estimate. There are a lot of variables, and the kind of turf you choose, logos, the quality of the turf, and the amenities that you want, but approximately ninety-two thousand dollars per field.
Did you have logos and things included in that?
One.
Okay, so you, the one, the quote that I got was about fifty-six thousand per field, but it didn't have any logos, it's just lines and just, just a field, you know, which has it is here and there, but I appreciate you looking into that, so.
Sure.
I don't know how everybody's going to go, but I do appreciate you researching that. I can, we'll, that's a discussion for a different day, I suppose.
Sure.
Any other Ms. Lanis?
Dick, did you hear?
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Chris for German, roll call please.
Cleary?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Hawke?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Terry.
Aye.
Mayor, thank you everybody for attending. Martha, thank you very much.